The December 18, 2018 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. This meeting is now called to order. Commissioners Vincent and Jenkins will lead us in invocation and then the Pledge of the Flag. Please rise if I will.
Father, we ask that you give us your healing touch. Father, we ask that you lead us in the way that we need to lead and give us the leadership that we need to do our jobs harder. We ask that this be your blessings and not upon us. In your name we pray. Amen.
Please join in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. The Chair calls for a motion to approve the minutes of the November 20, 2018 meeting. Do we hear a motion? We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. We do not have a consent agenda this evening, so we'll go straight to our regular agenda. The purpose of this meeting is to hear all pertinent testimony of those in support of and in opposition to the applications before the Board. Tonight is the first of two public hearings required to approve a change in zoning. The Board also considers plats. The procedure for public hearing items to be followed tonight will be: The public hearing will be open and testimony will be heard in the following order: The applicant, number one; number two, the staff; and number three, general public. And that includes those in support and in opposition to a request. If you're a part of a large group with a common interest, we ask that you appoint a spokesperson rather than restating the same information. When addressing the Board, please begin by stating your name and address, and try to limit your comments to five minutes. When all sides have spoken, the public hearing on the matter will be closed, and no further public discussion will be entertained. After each public hearing is closed, the Board will vote on the request. Zoning requests and the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation will go forward to the second public hearing, which will be conducted by the City Council on January 10, 2019. Agenda item A.
Thank you. It's a public hearing. We will be held to consider application RP 18-05 to replat approximately 3.356 acres of Lot 1, Block 1, Panther Creek subdivision, Unit 2, into two lots located on the north side of Tryon Road, west of US Highway 259, north and east of Airline Road.
Thank you, Angela. Is the applicant present? Would you please come to the microphone, give us your name and address, and tell us about your project, please?
Okay. My name's Heather Sandridge. My current address is 1221 Daffodil Lane, Longview, Texas, 75604. Sorry, I don't know if I need to do that for a start. What we're doing is, my father has owned that land for over 100 years, so we are, he's just giving me, his daughter, just an acre to build a house on it. And we're actually not supposed to be in that subdivision. The surveyor before put us in there without my dad knowing, so we're going through the process of getting out of that subdivision.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Any questions of the applicant? By the Commissioners? None? Hearing none? All right. Staff?
Thank you. As stated before, the applicant is requesting to replat Lot 1, Block 1 of Panther Creek, Unit 2 subdivision, from one lot into two lots located north, on the north side of Tryon Road, which is outside the city limits. This replat does comply with all of City of Longview requirements, and staff does recommend approval of this replat. I would be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Any questions of staff?
Is that in the ETJ?
Yes, sir. It is in our ETJ.
Any other questions? Hearing none? We'll ask for the general public. Is there anyone that wants to speak in support or opposition of this agenda item? There being none? We'll call for a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. The motion carries. Thank you. Agenda item B.
Thank you. A public hearing will be held to consider application RP 18-06 to replat approximately 7.99 acres of lots 1 through 20 Pine Hill addition into 28 residential lots located on the north of Spring Street, south of Chad Street, and west of Silver Falls Road.
Is the applicant present? Thank you, sir. Your name and address.
My name's John Bull. I live at 1100 Lincoln Drive, Longview, Texas. I'm here representing the developer on this subdivision. It's an old subdivision, I think even before the City of Longview, before it was in the City of Longview, and it had 20 lots. We went in under current proposed zoning requirements and replating it to 28 lots.
Okay. Any questions of the applicant? Hearing none? Staff? Thank you, sir.
Thank you. As the applicant stated previously, this is an existing 20-lot subdivision called the Pine Hill subdivision that was plotted in 1967. The applicant is developing this subdivision, installing all the infrastructure, and creating 20 lots that do comply with SF4 requirements. This replat does comply with all the City of Longview requirements. Staff recommends approval of this replat. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
You said 20, and there's 28?
Yes, sir. There's 28 now.
So what doesn't comply?
No, it complies. It does comply with SF4 requirements.
More lots. Just more lots.
Any additional questions? Okay. Thank you. The general public, is there anyone here that would like to speak in support or opposition of this agenda item? Seeing none? The public hearing is closed. We'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. The motion carries. Thank you. I would just simply add that I know it's been bladed clean, but I'd really like to see some trees and/or sidewalks to go with that project. Thank you. That's just a personal preference here. All right. Agenda item C.
Thank you. A public hearing will be held to consider application PD 18-10, followed by Carmike Cinemas LLC, to rezone from planned development general retail, PD 8, and general retail to planned development general retail for a movie theater with onsite consumption of beer, wine, and mixed beverages located at 201 Tall Pines Avenue.
Thank you. Angela, is the applicant present?
I'm Frank Lewis, 1150 Ash Street, Leewood, Kansas, 66211. And I do have a presentation, if I could approach and hand this out briefly.
Thank you.
And so I would thank, again, first of all, thank you all for giving us the opportunity to come and speak to this. This is part of a bigger project that we're doing. If you take, if you've been to the theater lately, you see that it is, was built in 1991, has not had any significant facelift or even a lot of minor upkeeps to it. A big part of that is, in the theater industry, the, believe it or not, the profitability margins were so razor-thin that most theaters, there wasn't money, there was no return on investment to go in and reinvest. What we have found at AMC and all of our competitors, have followed suit across America, is an opportunity to come in, do an extensive remodel on the theater, giving amenities that gets the adults off the couches and back into the movie theater. So the teenagers have migrated away, we're finding a way to bring them back in. So what we're proposing is over a $4 million complete remodel of the theater that I'd kind of like to take you through. Let me look on page two. So one of the things we're doing, one of the most important things that we found, is coming in and putting in recliner seating. It's a huge amenity for guests. I think the closest theater that has recliner seating to Longview would be, in Tyler, the Studio Movie Grill, but there's not many around. But it's one of the things of sweeping America, is very popular. We'd be losing quite a few seats. We currently have 1,526 seats. We dropped that down to 740. We'd add in reserved seating, the feature fair menu, which is enhanced food and beverage menu, coke freestyle, update the restrooms, really go through and refurbish the entire asset. The picture on there shows the current auditorium and what the auditorium, a similar theater, what the auditorium looks like post that remodel. If you look on page three, it just shows kind of the refiguring of the lobby. We would take the abandoned concession stand onto the right of the entrance there, and in that area, we would build what we call McGuffin's, which is just the adult beverage concession area, where the guests would go grab their beverage to take it into the auditorium. And then obviously, through the concession area, we'd also build out more of a kitchen area there to be able to do the food and beverage we're talking about. Just some of the renderings on page four, the current picture of the lobby, and then what the rendering, what the lobby would look like. Again, really updating it, making it fresh and modern, more of an upscale feel with warmer colors and textures. Five is where the current concession stand, we're not using, where we would add in that McGuffin's concession area. And again, McGuffin's is owned and operated by AMC. Page 10, or excuse me, page six just shows the lobby entrance. Again, new carpet, new wall fixtures. We'd go through and update the entrances of the auditoriums. Page seven shows the bathroom remodel. Page eight, it's kind of dark, but it shows the rendering of the auditorium. Again, we already kind of looked at that. But again, really going through and adding all these luxury recliners is the driving force to bring guests back in. The theater now is at a point where the attendance is just over 100,000 a year, which puts it in a position where it's very difficult to make a profit at that low attendance. By doing this, we're able to project a double attendance. So where we're down around 100,000, our budget is to be back up over 200,000, again, which will also help more traffic to the mall as well, as being an anchor tent there. Page nine just shows the updated food, the food menu. So we'd have entrees. Again, it was the other thing, better seats. The guests wanted better food. We thought that was carrots, and that didn't work, so what we did, what they were saying is we want something, the adults want something better than popcorn and candy. They were looking for meal replacement type food items, so we added those in, and they've been very, very popular. Page 10 and 11 just show our current drink menu, and really the main thing to show on there is just the pricing of it. We are more expensive than the restaurants in our parking lot. Our goal is that we maintain 1.1 drinks on average per adult guest who's consuming, whereas the restaurants tend to be somewhere around 2.3 drinks. So that's one of the ways that we keep that down. Our goal is to not get, allow guests to become intoxicated or show signs of intoxication. A guest that's showing signs of intoxication tends to be disruptive. We charge a large sum of money for a movie ticket, so guests are very passionate about seeing that movie. Disruptions cause a guest to become upset. They find a manager. Manager tends to have to refund that ticket, give a ticket for a guest to come back and watch the movie again uninterrupted. What people don't know is, is we still have to pay Hollywood film rent on that. Film rent's somewhere between 52% to 62% of, so a $10 ticket for like Star Wars, Disney Studios took $6.20 to that $10 ticket. So anytime we have disruptive guests, we're actually losing money when we're having to do the refunds. So our goal is to keep it down. It's an amenity to the experience, definitely not part of the experience. Page 12 just kind of shows the footprint. We have 308 locations in 32 states in the District of Columbia. We currently hold 40 licenses in Texas. The closest one where we're currently open would be Lufkin. Tyler, we are going to open in January, so under construction right now and getting ready to open. So again, 40 units in the state of Texas currently serving adult beverage. We've been doing it as a company for just over 20 years and have an immaculate track record. How we do it, again, we have every single one of our guests, excuse me, every single one of our associates go through responsible service of alcohol training. It's stricter than most of the national training that's out there. It's based off the same science, where the third-party company come in and develop this for us. What it is, is it collapses the middle section of sobriety, when you're assessing somebody's sobriety, where it would say that, "I'm beginning to show signs of intoxication." In restaurants, they tell you that that's okay to continue to serve that guest, you just need to watch them to make sure that they're not showing more signs of intoxication. We've collapsed that and said that if you're beginning to show any signs of intoxication, we won't serve you, because more alcohol will tend to not cause you to be less disruptive, it's going to cause you to be more disruptive, and we lose money with disruptive guests. So we actually collapsed that, and that's one of the reasons, ways to keep it down. We card absolutely everyone, regardless of age. We have a zero tolerance policy, where if someone serves a guest without checking the age by valid ID, regardless of the age of the guest, the associate will be terminated. We have a third-party company that comes in and does compliance checks, similar to what law enforcement does. Law enforcement around the nation, success rates are somewhere between 82% and 84%, meaning that 16% to 18% of the time, a minor is, has, was successful to be able to purchase an adult beverage underage. They send in, once a month, a company called Confero, our company sends, excuse me, our third-party company sends in a guest that's 21 to 25, once a month, to try to see if they can get to purchase a drink without an ID. Without that ID, again, the associate would be terminated. Our success rate, we're at 90, we ended last year at 97.6%. We use standard recipes to limit the amount of alcohol. We use distinctive cups, which you, which is, plastic cups, they're clear, look very, very different, distinctively different from the soda cups. The soda cups are never in the McGuffin's area. It's separated from the concession stand to make sure that we don't accidentally ever get alcoholic beverages mixed in with the non-alcoholic beverages, so we don't serve non-alcoholic beverages from the McGuffin's area. So if you have a McGuffin's cup, we know that it has alcohol in it, so it makes it easier for us to be able to track who's drinking, to be able to watch that. Again, we partner with local regulatory authorities and make sure that we are up to standards. Again, have just an immaculate track record nationwide in all of our locations. We position cameras in the bar area. If we believe that a minor has consumed alcohol, or we find them in possession of alcohol, we call law enforcement. If they're under the age of 18, we'll also call parent or legal guardian. We'll turn over the video of the transaction to law enforcement without subpoena, and we'll support conviction, we'll support 100% of the conviction of that. And again, the other thing, once we do this resee remodel, since we're serving more food and more beverage and more guests, obviously the number of staffing levels will increase, managers and staff, which will give more presence in the building to watch. And so that's really kind of the how we do it. And I just added in just a couple of things, quotes from different police departments, either awards of commendation, or just quotes where they've gone in and done due diligence. We've not found that anywhere in America where we've added adult beverage, have we seen an uptick of criminal activity in or around the theater of any kind? Meaning, no more fights, no DUIs, no minor possessions, no increased vandalism, disturbances, anything like that. We've not seen it. Actually, what we have seen by coming in and putting the resee remodels in, we've seen more adults come back in, so families who are going to the restaurants in the parking lot or around us are now coming back into the movie theaters. And so when you have that, it's a lot less of the disruptive people who are causing issues, so we see the number of issues actually decrease. Page 15 is just example 309 Cinemas, one that we've recently remodeled, so you can get a feel for the look and feel of what that would be. And so that's kind of the presentation of what we're doing, and happy to answer any questions you may have.
Will you continue to have 10 theaters?
Yes, we will. Yeah, we're not, we're not changing interior walls. We'll strip it down and put new wall coverings on, but we'll still have the 10 theaters. We'll close half of them and remodel it, and put the recliners in, and then we'll open those five and close the other five for remodel, so it'll continue its operation the whole time.
You mentioned the Studio Movie Grill in Tyler.
Yeah.
That's not your facility, correct?
That's not one of ours. But again, just to say, because the recliners are, I mean, they're a big deal. People will drive miles in to set in the seats, so there's just nothing around.
They offer pretty much the same thing you're offering here as far as, in regard to alcoholic beverages?
Similar. They provide service into the auditorium, so you can sit in the auditorium and they'll keep bringing drinks to you, where we require you to, if you want another drink, you have to get up and walk back into the lobby to get another one.
I have a plethora of questions, as you might could imagine. What are your hours of service going to be for alcoholic beverages?
For alcoholic beverages, obviously, we'd be within whatever the legal parameters were, and I'm not sure what it is in the City of Longview. But typically, bar operations don't open before noon, and we close, the sale of alcohol ceases at 12:30 a.m. or an hour before sales or consumption cutoff, whichever's earlier. So if it's a midnight license, then we shut down at 11:00. If it's a 2 o'clock license, we shut down at 12:30, if that makes sense.
So will your hours of operation for the movies themselves increase, or will it be the same?
The movies, the movies themselves would remain the same, starting the movie. So there would potentially be movies being shown when the adult beverage is not being served or not open.
Okay. So if I'm an average customer coming, and I would normally go to the left to the concession stand and go on into the theater, if I want an alcoholic beverage, instead, I buy my ticket and I go there, and I carry that into the theater with me?
That's correct.
Yes. So there's no sit-down and consumption area there?
I believe in the plans, we have a couple tables with a couple chairs by it, and that's really for guests who are waiting for another couple to show up or something like that. Typically, we see guests will sit there maybe five minutes waiting for somebody else, but it's not, it's not a gathering place. We're not trying to create, within the lobby area, an actual bar where you're having to walk through people who are consuming adult beverage. Again, the lights are still going to be bright, there's not going to be any additional ambient sound. Again, we know that alcohol causes people to be sensitive to light and hard of hearing. It's why intoxicated people squint and speak loudly. It's why bars have lights down low and music up loud. That's why we have our lights up bright and the music down really low, is because we're not trying to create an ambiance where people would want to sit there and consume alcohol. Because again, for us, we're trying to make sure people aren't showing signs of intoxication.
Is there a change, is there going to be a change in ticket costs?
I don't know. My guess is there would be a mild change in ticket cost. It wouldn't be significant, though.
Tell me about law enforcement. Do you currently staff with law enforcement, and will you staff more with law enforcement?
Yeah, so this theater, we have really no issues at the theater. We don't have, we don't carry security. We've not carried security and have had no issues with law enforcement. So what, again, what we've found is because there's no increased criminal activity of any type, it doesn't make, it doesn't make sense for us to add additional security hours. Most of that costs about $60 an hour. At a theater, we're doing, say, 200,000 in attendance, if we're getting, say, 20 cents per person spend, which is probably what we will get, that's about a $40,000 a year revenue stream. And once you bring in security guards at $60 an hour, then we don't make money doing it, so therefore, it wouldn't make sense for us to do it.
So if you have an issue, then you will call the police?
Absolutely.
The public service?
Yeah, anytime there would, if there would be an issue. But again, the incidence of that nationwide in 308 locations are almost zero.
And this is seven days a week, correct?
Correct.
All right. Any other questions? Anyone?
And the remodel, it's going to cost about $4 million?
Over, about $4.5 million.
$4.5 million.
Yep. It will bring it, it will bring it to a like-new condition. Again, it'll be a beautiful building when we're done.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Lewis. We appreciate your presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you. Staff?
Thank you. The applicant is requesting to rezone from planned development general retail, PD 8, and general retail, to planned development general retail for a movie theater with onsite consumption of beer, wine, and mixed beverages located at 201 Tall Pines. The property currently exceeds the required distances from churches and schools to allow for the onsite consumption of alcohol. Staff does find that the proposed zoning change is consistent with our future land use map and surrounding uses. Staff does recommend approval of the request. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Are there any questions of staff? Okay. Hearing none. We'll ask for the general public. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak in support or opposition to this agenda item? If so, please come forward. Seeing none? The Chair entertains a motion for, entertains a call for a motion.
Motion for approval.
Second.
We have a motion, and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. The motion carries. I would like to tell you, Mr. Lewis, there is an item that needs to be addressed regarding that property, and it's that slope on the backside. I don't know who's responsible for that, but it's really very, not well-maintained. And if you just look at that while you're in town and bring that to the attention of your maintenance people, that would be wonderful.
Sorry, is it like a grass slope or the concrete wall between everything, everything behind the building?
It's all bad. It's chunks of concrete. Yeah. It's bad news.
Okay. We do have, the general manager of the building is here tonight as well.
I've already been addressed. We've got the focus in to have all of that just completely cleared out behind the building.
Fabulous. Thank you. Your neighbors will thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next agenda, item D.
Thank you. A public hearing will be held to consider application PD 18-11, followed by Jill Chen requesting to amend PD 10-07 to revise the site plan for construction of a personal warehouse building located at 4601 McCann Road, on the west side of McCann Road, south of Bermuda Lane.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for having me here. We, our offices are on McCann Road. We've been there a long time, and we just wanted to add a storage warehouse, garage to the back of the property, not the building. And we've worked with Angela and those down at the city to help put something together that would be compliant.
Any questions of the applicant? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jill. Staff?
Thank you. The applicant is requesting to amend PD 10-07 to revise a site plan for the construction of a personal warehouse behind her current building. The original PD showed a warehouse located north of this property that was much larger than this proposed structure. The applicant has now requested to relocate the building behind their existing office, which is north of the post office. The building will be approximately 5,500 square feet with a 10-foot side and rear setback. In order to save the trees within the development area, the applicant is proposing to relocate them to the south property line. Staff does recommend approval of this request. I would be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Any questions of staff? Hearing none? General public, is there anyone that wishes to speak in support or opposition to this agenda item? Hearing none. This public hearing is closed. Thank you very much. We'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. The motion carries. Thank you. This is agenda item E, for which I must recuse myself and turn the meeting over to Mr. Jenkins.
Thank you.
Thank you. A public hearing will be held to consider application PD 18-13, followed by Johnson &amp; Pace Incorporated, requesting to amend PD 18-03 to revise the site plan for construction of a self-storage mini warehouse located on the west side of McCann Road and south of Spring Hill Road.
The applicant available? Please explain your project after your name and address, please.
Good evening. My name is Jeff Hamilton. I'm with Johnson &amp; Pace Incorporated. Our address is 1201 Northwest Loop 281, here in the fine city of Longview, Texas. I'd like to tell y'all thank you for giving me the opportunity to come up here and petition you for this approval. What we have is, and I don't know if it was in the submittal package or not, Angela, what the current zoning site plans look like or any of that information, but about this time last year, we came before you asking for permission to develop up to 70,000 square feet of self-storage facility. It was a mixture of air-conditioned space and then just regular storage space. We had five buildings on the site, and we moved forward with that design. Appreciate y'all approving the zoning for that, but as time progressed and plans were developed, we realized that the market had changed a little bit, and the non-climate-controlled space really wasn't something that was needed, and there was more of a need for more climate-controlled space. So as of right now, if you were to look at this site plan and look at, the first building So as of right now, if you were to look at this site plan and look at the first building, has a little appendage on it on the south side of the site, has an office space there. Plans have been permitted and it's currently under construction for that building with I guess the development in compliance with the current zoning. But one of the things that we're requesting to change is a result of going to fully climate-controlled storage. It was related to security. You may remember that in the current zoning, we had a fence that was required along McCann Road. It was an ornamental iron fence, had brick columns on it. It was needed because of the non-climate-controlled spaces. They had doors that opened up to the outside of the building, and because we needed a fence out there, part of the condition of the zoning ordinance was to make it ornamental, make it something attractive that as you drove through that corridor, it was pleasing to look at. We also had enhanced landscape along McCann Road. But this layout and with the building that's currently under construction, the access to the storage units is completely internal. You'll have two doors to get into the building, but there's no more perimeter storage around the building, and it removes the need to have fences for the site. Now, we still have fences required by our ordinances for buffer yards, things of that nature, but there's not a need to have a security perimeter fence at the site anymore. So part of this zoning request is to allow us to remove the fence that was currently proposed along McCann Road. And for the reasons we're stating is that before, it was needed for security, and we no longer need it for security, so we're asking to not build that fence along McCann Road, just to try to keep the corridor looking the same when you look at our site and the landscaping that we have. We've designed it to match what BTH Bank has. BTH Bank doesn't have a fence, so we would rather not build that fence along McCann Road as well. That's one part of the zoning request. The second part was tied to the maximum allowable building area that we had, which in the original zoning was up to 70,000 square feet. The building that's currently under construction is close to 48,000 square feet. So with this building, if it goes well and it leases out the way our client hopes that it will, they're asking for permission to build that same building again, which is the gray box to the right on this screen. So the two parts of the zoning that we're looking to change, one is the fence, and the other is to allow us to increase the total storage area constructed on the site up to, I believe it's 100,000 square feet. We're still looking, keeping the exterior of the buildings with the architecture requirements that were under the current zoning, which is currently permitted, which is currently under construction on the first building, maximum height, this two-story building. We still have the rock and the stucco and things of that nature on the building, concrete pavement, no storage allowed outside. None of that is, we're requesting or even proposing to change with this zoning update. So that's it, just in a very quick nutshell, and I'd be happy to answer any questions and explain further.
Thanks, sir. Are there any commissioner questions of the applicant?
I got one.
Yes, sir.
You are stripped to clean. In the beginning, I'm asking, we were going to have, at least when I drove by there, we were going to have a natural access driveway already there because of the pipeline driveway.
Yes, sir.
Unless I'm blind, I see two driveways. I'm asking you, is there still the one driveway that we approved that you were going to access by the well site? Am I not correct in that first one? And I'm looking now, I'm thinking I'm seeing two driveways.
You see?
I mean, what I'm seeing here driveway, but in the beginning, I'm proposing that toward the apartment complex was a road already there, and that's how you were going to enter. And now, you're showing me a plat with the driveway on.
On the far north side.
And one of the conversations we all discussed was, that's not the best road in the world.
Yes, sir.
And it's a traffic issue already, and we weren't going to have the second one for that reason, and now I see a second one.
That's a very good point, and what we're proposing is, you're correct, we showed you one driveway down on the pipeline side. That's the main access for this project. It was then, it is now. On the current zoning, which was what we showed you about this time last year, that northern access is emergency vehicle access only. It's not open to the public. It'll be gated, and it's specifically there for a fire truck or an ambulance or whatever that would need to come in. And the only reason it's there is because we have to have two means of access for emergency vehicles.
You didn't before, but you do now?
No, we had it. It was there before.
It was on the original one, and I'm sorry that we don't have the slide for the.
I just didn't, when I drove by the other day, I thought, okay, this.
Yeah, I'm sorry we don't have the original slide up here, but it was on the original one, and originally, it was for fire access only. That's why it's required. And so they do have two driveways, but that northern one, this one right here, will be for fire access only. The public will not have access to that driveway.
It would be a Knox box?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Okay. No exit.
No exit.
So your client can't come out of that other way.
That is correct. It's locked down for emergency vehicle only. Matter of fact, in the current site plan that's approved, part of the original zoning, we don't have that second access right now because one building did not require two points of access, but two buildings will. But we have extra pavement out there just for fire trucks to be able to make their maneuver, make turns, basically make a U-turn, three-point turn, and come back out the main entrance.
One thing you brought up last time was that you were putting the buildings in there where they were pleasing as far as if you're driving by, you couldn't really see the, all the different doors and so forth.
Right.
What's going to happen on the north side of that building?
Good point. So with the zoning that we currently have and the buildings that we originally planned, you had a large building with, imagine a lean-to type structure on the north sides of the buildings, which was for your non-climate-controlled storage. So you're right, there would be several doors for those individual storage boxes. This does not have any of that. This building only has your main points of, your main points into and out of the building are at the center of the building, on the north and south side, two double doors. There are emergency exits, which are just three-foot-wide doors on the corners of the building, but other than that, you're looking at a solid wall. There's no, you don't have multiple doors into storage. So with that, part of the building orientation has not changed relative to McCann Road. We've kept the angles of the buildings the same, and you won't have a view of those multiple doors like.
And then you did away with the fence, right?
We are requesting permission to do away with that fence.
Now, don't you think the fence added a lot of distraction from the metal buildings?
I guess that could be a perception or an opinion. I believe the landscaping will do that for you.
So what is the landscaping exactly? I heard you say it's same as.
I don't believe it would be a stretch to say our landscaping is styled to be exactly like what BTH Bank has. We have the same plants, the same shrubs, very similar spacing to them, so we very much tried to copy what they did.
Because I remember the fencing was, one of the reasons why y'all discussed it was it was a decorative thing.
To cover up where the road.
The decorative side of the fence, I'll say they're complementing changes, if you will. We're removing all of those exterior roll-up doors to get into the storage spaces, and part of that fence was to help cover that. It was also there because we needed security. And now, we don't have any of those doors. We don't need a fence for security, so we're asking for permission to not put that fence up. It's also, just as far as balancing the corridor, driving down McCann Road, at one time, we did need the fence, so we tried to make it as nice as we could while you're driving down McCann Road. Now that we don't, we'd like to keep that open and have the view from BTH and superior storage balanced without the fence.
So does that property have 24-hour access?
I don't want to speak out of turn. Adam, is it 24-hour access?
It probably will. Currently, right now.
Can you please come up to the podium?
You didn't tell me. I'm taking out of your pay now. Adam Wagner, the managing partner of this project, and currently, right now, we're tossing around the idea of making it 24 hours because it's going to be the only smart facility. So use your smartphone to get in the facility. It turns on the lights as you're walking down the hallways, the same way you'd walk down the grocery store aisle, and the freezer lights start coming on for you. We're doing the same thing here with all of the electrical lights. The whole place will be camered, and so there's some other properties around the country that have went 24 hours. Traditionally, self-storage companies would shut down 10 o'clock, 11 o'clock at night because you'd have people that would hang out on property, try to live in the place. Can I move this because this is like really up in my eyes? There we go. Anyway, but yeah, so they would live in the properties where all of ours actually have thermal sensors inside of every single unit, and it'll actually alert us to, hey, somebody's in the unit. The units won't lock if there is somebody in the unit because, like I said, it's a smart system, which there is not any around in East Texas. So East Texas would be the first smart facility as far as self-storage goes. And even to get into like the main entryway, you walk up to it, it'll say, hey, do you want to open up the main doors? And you push a button, say yes, and the little sliding glass doors will open up, and you'll walk in, walk up to your unit, and it'll see that you're in close proximity within five feet of your unit. Do you want to open your unit? Yes. Your unit light turns green, and the door pops up. So it's a long answer to are we open 24 hours? I think as far as convenience, if you have a site, or if you have a spot that you want to get into for some reason in the middle of the night, you guys are moving or something like that, I think it would be great for the customer to be open 24 hours a day, as long as I feel comfortable. If I would send my wife there at 2:00 a.m., and I know no one else is in there because no one has access to get into it unless they're in our database. So the answer is, I don't really know yet, but I'm leaning more towards being open because I think it's for customer ease and customer access, I think is more important for us to provide something that no one else provides.
Well, the only question I had was the other storage facilities, have fencing, you know, and fencing only keeps honest people out.
Right.
A world-class facility of this nature, you know, are we putting a big target out there that says, hey, come?
Right. Well, if you look at any of the.
See if you can beat smart.
Yeah, if you look at, even some of the other ones here in town, the Walmart conversion doesn't have fencing. The new one, I think it's just out of the city limits, over on Alpine Road, next to Alpine Golf Course. It's 48,000 square feet. It's pretty close to the same square foot as we are. It's 100% climate-controlled. They have no fencing. All the REITs in Dallas, whether it's Cube, Smarts, all their new facilities they're building, do not have fencing.
Is the building sprinkled?
Yes, sir. With holy water.
The one over there, it's on Prime Road, I guess it is, or over there off of Gilmore Road. It used to be a skating place and everything. That one's gotten broken in a few times, and it's fenced and everything, and it's a climate control as well.
Yeah.
But you're saying that the other areas are not having problems with breaking in?
It's, and I don't want to step on anybody's business, but it's in a, you're talking about the one that's kind of sitting back off?
Yeah. It's off of, over there off of Gilmore Road. It used to be Skate Land or something years ago.
Off of Toller Road.
Yeah, Toller Road, thank you.
Is it the one that? I would have to.
Yeah, Toller Road.
I didn't grow up in Longview, so I'm trying to think. It's a big metal building that has, it does have like the chain link fence around it.
All the way around, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
And it, but it still has gotten broken in a few times. And so my question is, is that do you really feel like it's going to be something because of technology that it's going to be safe?
Well, I don't think, if a thief really wants to get in, a wrought iron fence isn't going to stop them from getting into my facility because the chain link fence didn't stop them. They're still getting broke into.
Right. They're cutting the fence.
Yeah. I mean, so it's really, security is a perception. It's because if you want to get in there, you're just going to tailgate somebody else getting into it. I've seen people do that in gated communities we lived into, and it's supposed to be gated, and then somebody else comes in right behind them. So I don't know. I don't know if, I think it's more of a perception that a gate is more secure or a fence is more secure than not. I just, I look at the people that make a lot of money at doing this kind of stuff, and that's the large companies and all their new facilities, they're not doing it. We're involved with a co-op called Store Local. They're based out of California, but they have 3,600 properties, and they've advised all of their people, there's no sense in putting fences around any of this stuff with all the new technology. When things pop up, like whenever somebody shows up on property after hours, we can have it set up to automatically text the managers or send us an email, hey, you had somebody come in at 2:00 a.m.? It's kind of those off-peak times. And then we've also talked about the off-peak times, that we're going to shut it off at 11, but hey, if you let us know ahead of time, we can let your access code work till 6:00 a.m. or whatever the time is.
Any other questions of commissioners?
Comments or questions?
Pardon?
Comments or questions? I'm asking you.
Yeah, make a comment.
I still have a problem that we sold this thing in the beginning to keep that area looking nice, and I'm not the tree-loving guy, but I like the fence for the aesthetics of it. I don't know what the landscape, Angela, I'm asking you, what our landscape think to make sure this facility, no fence looks pretty. I don't need another ugly building. And I know, I don't mean that ugly to you, but that was the whole point in this whole beginning, was about the fence, was let's make it look nice and pleasing to our community. And if we take the fence, we need something to protect us, and no fence, sir, but we need to still look nice. Your stucco, you know what, I got the big building too, and it's hard, but we did make the commitment, and now we're asking to change that. I'm still balanced on that fence wasn't going to keep the criminal, but it was going to make our community look good. And we sold it to us for approval based on that, and we were keeping that corridor nice and clean. We were going to keep some trees, and now we're not. So there I have the problem with the no fence thing. Is there a solution for my disdain for this no fence? I'm asking Angela for you to give me some suggestions how we can protect ourselves. Because you're not a bank, you're not going, I know you can make it pretty, but your two buildings do not look like BTH Bank. I would like, I don't know how to say this, but your two buildings are not, don't compare them to BTH Bank. I would like to know that you give me something that looks better than just two storage buildings. I'm asking, what are your plans? What can you tell me that you're going to do, guarantee, if you don't get a fence?
Okay, so one, before, we were permitted up to five buildings with exterior access for a bunch of roll-up garage doors that we were going to make look as nice as possible, and we're taking that away. Now, it's completely internal with just the two buildings. So one, the enhanced landscaping was a concern for making those buildings look better. We were trying to screen all those exterior doors that you would see on the north side of the building. We were trying to position buildings so that you would have these corridors that were blocked from view as you were driving by. The fence was certainly needed because of security, and we certainly didn't want to put up a chain link fence or something of that nature along McCann Road. So yes, part of the sale for that fence, because we needed the fence because of the type of buildings that were going in, we were going to enhance that fence and make it look as nice as possible to improve the view, period. So yes, we're asking for the fence to go away because we don't need it anymore, but at the same time, these buildings will look better than what we had planned before. Right now, we are approved and permitted to build the other style. Certainly, the fence would still be out there, but I do believe, and I don't want to say I'm selling it to you, but I do believe that this will look better than having those multiple doors on the north sides of the buildings. One thing that we do have, and it's hard to see on this plan, but when this plan is printed out full-scale, the tree preservation area up on the north end on the corner, that area is actually larger than what was originally proposed on the first set of plans. So we do have more trees on the corner left in place. You're right, they did have to go out there and clear the property. There's a lot of earthwork that's being done just to be able to get these buildings built, which there was a lot of earthwork that had to be done to build the multiple buildings as well. So we do have, we have tree preservation in the back next to the compressor station. We have trees up on the north side, trying to preserve those, keep them in place for you. We do have enhanced landscaping along McCann Road. I have to say, it's, I guess if I'm selling it to you, I'm selling that we're taking away this nice fence, but we're also taking away the ISO of those multiple doors.
Jeff, one other question. What is going to be on the side of the building to the north? Is that going to be stucco down that side, or is that just going to be metal fushy?
No, sir. It's a, it has a mixture of, I've got my support in the back here, and we have elevations of the buildings that are part of the zoning package, so you have a mixture of rock and stone and.
So if you're coming in from the north, you're not going to see just the side of a big metal building?
Correct. Still have the color requirements, or not putting galvalume roofs and things of that nature on it. nature on it. It's, it is, we're permitted and allowed to build the first building, exactly like, it's under construction right now. What we're asking for is the opportunity to build a second one. And we're also asking for permission to not build that fence. Because right now, with the current zoning and the current plans that are approved, the fence is in the plans, and it's approved. It's roughly $100,000 add, $100,000 cost to build that fence. So, for obvious reasons, we don't need the fence. So, we're, you know, I don't know that economics is not a consideration to this board, but...
But you are increasing the footprint to 100,000?
We are increasing. And one of the things that's different about this is we're building it, it's a two-story building. So, you'll have an upper level and a lower level. But the lower level is more of a basement-type situation. There's a retaining wall built around three walls of this thing so that we can have one that's completely underground. So, driving by, you don't see as much building footprint for the 100,000 square feet as you would if we built multiple buildings out there.
I'm like Ronnie, I've got the same problem with the fence going away, because that was one of the major discussions, the meeting we had before. And it was partly security, but it was also for the looks going down the road.
So, from this side of the podium respectfully, it was always security for us. We had to have the fence, so if we have to have the fence, let's make it as nice as we can. And it's part of the project to make it a nice-looking fence.
Yeah, it was wrought iron fence is what the discussion was.
Yes, sir. Wrought iron fence with brick columns.
It was wrought iron.
Yes, sir.
Security, why didn't we say chain link fence back then?
I'm asking. Why didn't we just, why was there just a chain link fence proposed at the time? If it was security, what was going to make the...
I didn't have a metal fence, did you? You didn't say it was going to be a cyclone-type fence.
Correct.
You planned it as being a metal fence.
Correct. We knew that if we had to put a fence along McCann Road, it couldn't be, it couldn't be a wooden fence, it couldn't be a chain link fence. And no, nothing less than what we had presented before would serve its purpose or meet the needs of the community, if you will. So, we knew that if a fence was built, it was going to have to be something of the standard that we proposed and got approved with our last knowledge.
Is there being talk about adding more trees along that frontage?
There...
I know you're talking $100,000 in fence, but the standpoint of just breaking it up some along that frontage, because I think that's what we kind of told our public, that we wanted it to look nice and things like that. You're doing stucco-type stuff, and you're doing some of those things. But I think the big questions came up, is it going to have the eye-pilling approach ongoing? Because eventually, or you can put another building over here in this open end on the north side?
Open, could we go back to the site plan, please?
Yes.
So, we opened in on the north side. We will have landscaping along the entire frontage between the two drives.
Okay.
So, that landscaping is there. And granted, what's currently approved, the site plan that we have approved is just for the one building, and we have landscaping along McCann Road for what has been disturbed out there. So, we have a plan for that. So, the next go-around, we would have to have a site plan in place for that second building, and we'd have to provide landscaping for it as well, which, you know, the area that's blank, white, between the building and the tree preservation area...
That's the area I was talking about?
Yes, sir. I can tell you that right now, I don't have any trees planted in there, but I don't know what would prevent a few trees from being planted in there. At the same time, it's...
Well, I was just talking about future, is there going to be another building there in the future?
So, there wouldn't be a third building with what we're requesting, and the reason for that is the square, the same reason we're here today, is because we restricted the amount of storage space that we were allowed to put on the site. We've cut it back, or restricted it to 70,000 square feet. So, with this, we're restricting it to 100,000 square feet, which doesn't leave enough space to build a third building. We would build two.
They would have to come back, the PD amendment, to do a third one like they're doing now.
And...
I think they answered the question, there's room for another building, but not without a further approval.
Correct.
In the current zoning, we were approved for up to five buildings, smaller.
And of course, for a less intense use, you can always remove those buildings. But you know, we're only showing two here, so we couldn't add a third building. That's a good point, Michael.
Thank you very much. Any more questions or comments from the commissioners? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. The applicant is requesting to revise the original site plan for PD 18-03. As he stated previously, the original site plan showed five self-storage mini warehouse buildings with an office totaling 72,000 square feet, approximately 52,000 square feet air-conditioned and 20,000 un-air-conditioned storage space. The new site plan proposes two storage warehouses that are completely air-conditioned with an office space adding up to approximately 100,000 square feet. Both buildings, as I stated previously, will be conditioned storage spaces. And the applicant is proposing to remove the decorative iron fence with masonry columns along McCann Road that was previously indicated on the site plan. If the applicant were to install a fence along the front, within this staff report, the fence will be required to be decorative wrought iron with masonry columns. He would not be allowed to do cyclone or chain link or a wood fence. All conditions from the previous plan development will remain the same, including no outside storage vehicles, trailers, recreational vehicles, or anything similar will be allowed on this site. It will have the same setbacks, the same parking requirements, the same masonry requirements, the same landscaping requirements. They had a 15-foot landscape area in the front along McCann Road, that will remain the same. And then, talking about Ronnie, talking about the fencing, maybe, you know, you could require some extra landscaping in lieu of a fence. That is, that could be a suggestion that would be made. To the rear of the property, the applicant will preserve the trees as shown on this site plan and as shown on these pictures. Buffering fencing will be required and is shown on the site plan on the rear of the property and to the adjacent to the south of the property next to the apartment complex. As stated previously, they do have two driveways. One will be restricted access for emergency access only. The other one will be for customer and office staff. Staff does find that the proposed zoning change is consistent with surrounding uses. Staff recommends approval. I would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you.
What did you say about fencing on the...
On the, this side?
Right.
And then, this south, which this is the south side, this is adjacent to the multifamily, there will be required buffering fencing, so solid wood or solid masonry fencing. And I believe on the plan, they show solid wood.
Is there a possibility of, in case of growth going in that area, that there would be room for sidewalks?
Well, they provided a 15-foot landscape area, so there is a possibility that sidewalks could go in there. And the landscape area is from the property line back towards their property.
No fencing on that, what I'm calling the north side there, I guess. I mean, it was originally, but now, nothing would go there?
Yeah, originally, originally, they proposed wrought iron along this McCann roadside, and so, they're proposing not to.
I mean, that other north side, between the woods, right there.
Between here? There are not required fencing? No, sir.
Okay.
But they do have fencing along here and along there.
And they own that piece?
Yeah, they own this, yeah.
They're residual, and they have, that's the area that they left undisturbed.
Yeah.
Any more questions of staff and commissioners or comment?
Last comment, the Johnson Pace question. You're absolutely sure those fire trucks will make those?
I'll answer your question with yes, and then tell you a story. We had a site not too long ago where we presented to the city staff that the fire truck could maneuver through the site. And we have software that can model those trucks.
Right.
We have a very specific vehicle that we have to model for the city of Longview. It's their fine 85,000-pound, 100-foot ladder truck. And when we presented to city staff that that truck could in fact maneuver through one of the sites, and we ended up having to demonstrate to the city in a field test. We actually set up in the old Kmart parking lot, set up cones, and constructed that site to the restrictions that that site development would be. And we said, that truck can drive through these cones. And city fire truck operator was in fact able to drive through that a couple of times without any issues at all.
With little wiggle room.
Pardon me?
With little wiggle room?
Yeah, with little wiggle room, but he was able to do it. And that's taken into consideration, the ladder truck overhang, and you know, just, it's, it's an amazing truck, but it was able to maneuver through there. So, yes, what we have designed and what we will have permitted, and it's just two things. One, we're asking for zoning approval. We still have to go through site plan approval and things of that nature where we once again prove that to staff.
Just a couple of points on there that looked awfully tight for Mr. 85K.
Certainly. And that's, so what we have with the current building that's been permitted and under construction, the truck can maneuver around that. The second building going through the permit process, we'll demonstrate to the city again that that truck can maneuver through there.
Anybody else? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
You're done?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to entertain any questions from the public, those in opposition or approval of this project, come forward. Hearing none. Like to, may I ask a question first of Angela? So, could we customize a motion with or without fence, or how do we do that?
Well, as the staff report is presented, it is without a fence. I mean, if you all want to make the recommendation, I mean, you can add a stipulation to your recommendation.
I'd entertain a motion then.
I would move for approval.
Second.
Pardon?
Second.
All right. Any other questions? If not, those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those in opposition?
Can we get a hand?
Can we get, show us hands?
Can I get hands on the opposition?
Tim and I, wait, Tim and I...
You want hands on the opposition?
Opposition.
Opposition, hold your hands up, please. Four.
Yeah.
Motion denied. F is next. Ms. Parkey will be back in.
Thank you, Commissioner Jenkins. Appreciate that. Agenda item F.
Yes, ma'am. A public hearing will be held to consider application S 1806 filed by Crafton Communications, Inc., requesting a specific use permit for a radio and television or microwave tower, also known as a monopole cell tower, in single-family four zoning district located 1808 Silver Falls Road.
Thank you. Any questions? Is the applicant present?
Yes, thank you. My name is David Prejean, represent AT&amp;T Mobility. My address is 1870 Crown Drive, Suite 1500, Dallas, Texas. And what AT&amp;T is proposing is to replace an existing stadium light standard that its prior use was also for telecommunications. This was approved as a Clearwire telecommunications tower, and they moved off in the last couple of years. So, what we are going to do is, we can't install our antennas on that light standard that's currently there because it's structurally inadequate, so we're just going to take it down and put another one up. Our tower will actually look just like the other two carriers that are also located at the stadium. I think Verizon and maybe T-Mobile have very similar type arrangements out there. And be glad to answer any questions that you have.
I, for one, I was a former school board member at Pine Tree. I'm tickled to death that we're finally getting AT&amp;T.
Thank you. We started this a couple of years ago, and finally came back around, so we're excited.
Any questions of the applicant? No? All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Staff?
Thank you. The applicant is requesting a specific use permit for a monopole telecommunications tower in single-family zoning district. The applicant is proposing to install a monopole tower that will replace one of the light poles at the stadium. They will co-locate the stadium lights along with the antenna on this monopole tower. A specific use permit is required for a communications tower in single-family SF4 zoning district to ensure no negative impact on surrounding properties, particularly if there are any residential properties nearby. The approval of this SUP will approve the use of the tower. Earlier today, they went before the zoning board of adjustment to allow for the height of 120 feet. Staff does find that this proposed, this type of use is compatible with the future lane use map and does not appear to be detrimental to surrounding, the surrounding neighborhood. Staff does recommend approval of this request, and I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
How tall is the light structure?
The whole structure in itself is 120 feet, including the antennas.
The new one?
Yes, the new one.
So, it's actually...
It's staying the same.
Yeah, it's staying exactly the same. It's not going any taller.
It's just more...
Yes. Yeah.
Any additional questions? All right. I see a question brewing over there. No? Okay, thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that we'd like to speak in support or opposition to the request? Seeing none, or is there? Excuse me. I do have one. Sorry. Give us your name and address, please.
Yes, my name is Tony Hollins. I reside at 2401 Tennessee Street, Longview, Texas. I'm the Assistant Superintendent of Facilities and Planning for Pine Tree ISD. And the district does support this antenna. We've negotiated with them, and the board has approved their request. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, sir. End of public hearing.
Move for approval.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? The motion carries. Thank you. Let's see, next item on our agenda is staff update.
Thank you. The last item over on George Ritchie Road, it was tabled to the last council meeting, and it was approved with a stipulation that 75% of the structure be masonry.
Any questions on that? Would you repeat that again, please?
Um, city council...
Now, this is the development with the houses.
Yes, ma'am. It was the 19-lot subdivision just north of Spring Hill High School. City council approved the plan development with a stipulation that 75% of the structure